We're going to be shy, public council people tonight. I'd like to welcome everybody and we'll call the meeting to order. We will have prayer and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day. We pray for our village and the people who help in our community. We pray for our servicemen and women who sacrificed so much all over the world to keep our country secure. Also, Lord, let's remember the veteran family with the passing of plea. Be with the sick and the injured, that they may be healed and comforted, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the roll call, I want to put a special thank you out to all veterans. We're grateful for your service to our country. And we'll have the roll call now.
Bukraski's absent, Barr.
Yes.
Hader.
Yes.
Beverly.
Mm-hmm.
Jones.
Here.
And Hart's absent.
Going on, approval of November 2nd regular council minutes?
Another correction that was pointed out to me under EMS. I put that Cody and Garrett were going from intermediate to advanced, but I was told it's really basic intermediate. Is that right? Basic to advanced. Oh, basic to advanced, so anyway, I had it wrong. Basic to...
With that change, motion to approve.
With the change, Mark Haber makes a motion to approve to November 15 council minutes.
Second.
Mike Barr seconds, roll call please.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Hader.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Okay, going on, we have approval of the bills. If everyone's had a chance to look at those, we'll entertain a motion to approve the bills.
Let me ask a question regarding the... No, never mind, that's it.
Okay.
That's a different one. I'm good.
All right?
I move where you put the bills.
Ron Jones makes a motion to approve the bills, second please.
Second.
Mark Haber seconds, roll call please.
Barr.
Yes.
Hader.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Okay. On your agenda, you see that we have Nelson Hirschberger here from Tri-State Dairy. At this time, I'll usually go a few minutes and you have the podium and explain what you'd like to do with your factory. Thank you.
Well, first I want to thank everyone who's been here. We're with the Tri-State Dairy Cheese Factory downtown here. We came to town almost five years ago, February, five years. We built a cheese factory down there. Now, we're running full production, don't have any other room. We're looking to buy the two properties right beside us, between the laundromat and our building. And we would like to take down those houses, put up a building. Obviously, to do that, we need to have a rezone. So, our first question is, can we rezone that to commercial, put in a building, ramp up production, hire some more employees? Yeah.
I would defer that to Kent or Mike Bailey. What is the process if he wanted to rezone something or if it can be done?
Yes, it can be done. Just go to the planning commission and see if they will do.
Okay.
And I guess the only reason I suggested he come talk to you folks, because you have the ultimate vote on zoning changes. And I just hate to see him buy properties and start making plans and you guys vote no. I mean, if you know you're going to vote no in advance, it'll just save a lot of hassle, save him some money.
Is it light industrial, is that what zoning would be, or heavy?
Light industrial.
And what is the building right now? Where they're at?
It's...
The building itself is owned okay. It'd be the two vacant...
Two lots would be light, and from residential to light industrial then, okay. Of course, letters that have to go out to all the neighbors, that'd be the first step.
Yeah, but we're back to...
Does any one of this council people have any problem with him doing...
I would hate to say it. I watched that at the last meeting, I just hate to see a commercial endeavor right in the middle of all of that residential.
Okay.
I drove through there the other day. You know, with all the tanks and everything that are out back, and I don't want to in any way put you into a financial strap, you financially trying to talk you into a new building or something, but, boy, I'd love to see you move out to Industrial Park.
Well, I personally would love that too, but...
Got a heck of a deal on real estate.
I know, but I build a customer base. They order weekly, they expect product when they order. And for me to do that, I have to basically keep this plant running and start 100% open.
Hmm.
As far as going commercial in residential, laundromat's commercial, there's two houses, I'm commercial, Frontier's commercial, there's one house, scribbled children's, that stretch is all mingle. So, from my point of view, basically what we would be doing is expanding the commercial area.
Correct.
So, yeah. But basically, what I need to know is before I spend money on property and houses, is whether there's even a possibility. I don't want to spend $90,000, $100,000 buying those two properties if I can't, if the town's not going to expand there. Now, the difference between spending $100,000 buying that property and expanding there and keeping my current business running and expand off of that, is that $100,000 is going to be pretty cheap compared to making a move, buying all the equipment. Yeah. Basically, pennies on the dollar difference of expanding where I'm at to where moving the whole business.
Okay.
But when you name those other commercial properties, they don't have the semi-traffic, the truck traffic, anything else that you're naming? And if you're expanding your business, my question is how much more, you know, those roads aren't built for heavy duty trucks and things of that nature?
My goal to expand there would be to put a parking lot in right on this end, right just south of the laundromat, where my trucks can pull in, back into my receiving bay, my loading dock, and go back out the same way they come in, instead of running down by the fairgrounds and going around that way, which I think would benefit...
They're going down the alley, you mean, is that how it works?
They're not, they come in around the front, they circle around my building and they come up the back alley and back out, at this point. What I would like to do, and then the trucks that are picking up come in, they load on the front of the building, they go down Wendell through the fairground, hang a right, and come back up on Main Street.
You know the hours, is it early morning hours these trucks are showing up, the evening?
Seven, seven in the morning to, some of these trucks are showing up at midnight. It's, yeah, basically all hours.
There's not semis involved, just the milk trucks that fix up the...
Yeah, there's semis.
Semis.
Semis, yeah.
Okay.
We run at least one semi a day. Some, some, three, seven, six. So, yeah, basically what I need to know is what I can do, how, why is from town to city, or site? Can I do it here? Do I need to put it on hold for a year and go to Industrial Park? I'm looking at my options and trying to make the best decision for Tri-State...
Well, with the use of the industrial park, there is free land, which is guaranteed by jobs, and there is revolving loan monies. You'd have to put an application and see if qualified, and go from there if that's the way council thinks we're going to go. You've heard from two...
Well, we're providing financing.
Yeah. We don't have two here, so it's probably something that we should get our heads together on and get you a definite answer whether council's going to support that or not.
Right.
So, we love entrepreneurship, we love people that expand, and somehow, we'll work to help you.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is this lot split, Chicago Avenue and Finn Vogel Sound. You have a few minutes there, sir?
Thank you. Like, last month, from what I understand, there was some, or last meeting, there was some information brought up about this lot split. There was a lot of concern, some people might have had questions they couldn't have answers to because I wasn't here. So, that's what brought me here today. I wanted to have myself available to anybody that had questions with the issues that were brought up. Out there right now is two lots, approximately 411 foot deep. The one has a vacated house on it, the basement's still setting. I propose to split that lot just directly in half, and then it could be set up for another house. I'm looking at single-family houses, I'm also looking at just splitting this so I can sell them. I mean, I'm not, one of the things I think I hear people wonder is if I'm doing condos or whatever. It's not any of my plans, I don't think, I don't even know if condos could be put there, but I think that was one of the questions that I wanted to put to rest. Basically, the other issue that was brought up is how would the driveway or road be taken care of? The way I have it proposed is the driveway will be private-owned by each of the lots. They maintain, take care of their property themselves. It will not be considered a road by any means. It's 30-foot easement for each, each lot will have their right-of-way for utilities, ingress, egress, but it is private property, it's not to be city-owned or road. There was an issue when I took this to the planning commission, we tabled it because some people were concerned about the water, the watershed off the property. I've been given advice to put in a, well, it's kind of like the water garden, I think they call it, that we have here in town, just a low-lying area that's built to hold the water there and slowly let it seep away. That's what I agree we can do to those two lots in the back to make, you know, help that situation out. But with that being said, I guess I'm here for any questions that anybody on the council may have.
I'll say something here real quick, because Ron, you brought up the last time there and say you separated storm line out there off of Westwood. If he was capable, if we allowed that to happen, you know, where was the release out to that line, off that property, if those issues? I talked to Ron Maynose today about it, he thought that would be a good idea if we wanted to, or, you know, have an idea of tapping into that.
So, there is one out there? Because at that point, I wasn't aware.
You talked about an easement, you said 30-foot easement for utilities?
Yes. If I may, I've got to speak out explicitly, like, this is the, that's the information I have with separation of the lots. Right down the center of it is the right-of-way for each lot, easement, the descriptions in here, explain what each lot has the rights to. Basically, so lots in the front don't have easement rights to the very back lots because there's no necessity for them to have that right. But those two lots in the back will need access to the Chicago Avenue for water, that stuff, so that's why utility easement.
What are council's wishes?
Well, I think this belongs in committee first. I mean, this is the first time I've seen this actual plat. I don't want to sit here and make a decision after 30 seconds as to whether I'm for this or against it, and I don't think it's appropriate that any of us do that.
Well, this will actually go through the planning commission.
But my understanding is planning commission put it on hold so that it could be committed, either water or sewer or property committee, and I think that's appropriate.
Last council meeting, people had questions, so that...
That's, yeah, that's the only reason I...
Well, then, we'll turn it over to committee.
I mean, I think that's appropriate.
Yes.
Water and sewer?
Well, I want to go to water, sewer, pop. He's worried about his water, it's a water, too.
So, that's exactly correct, water and sewer. Which consists of Mike Barr, Ron Jones, Mark Haber. And Michael, you were the chairman.
Yep. I'll go with these guys here tonight, real quick, we'll set up a meeting if you want to invite you back and talk a little bit more about it, but if we can, you know, within a week, have an answer for it.
There you go.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay. Then, committee first, which are in your packet, Hicks Picks or Hicks TV. Another thing that's in your packet is administrator's report, which is, you can see by his report that the industrial drive coming under budget, and some notes here on leaf pickup. You get one more pass Monday, December 7th, people should have their leaves out by morning. One other thing I want to add is, Kent, you did a wonderful job there with getting this road set up. You said it would be done in November. There was a lot of people involved prior, but I want to commend you for your effort in getting this done and doing it under budget, so thank you.
A lot of that goes to the county.
Yes, one, that's right. You two worked well together, and we'll pass that on to them.
Now, we need a ribbon-cutting ceremony.
We'll get a sign, we'll get the lights in, we have ribbon-cutting, okay. Let's get this over to Troy.
Okay. And first thing, first thing I have is ordinance 2015-13, or third reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend chapter 181 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville regarding municipal income tax. It's had all the changes made to it, some recommended by the state, municipal organizations and village employees and things like that, so...
We just got this tonight, right? What, the whole final, it's just...
Well, that was earlier, we had that too, but I've made some, I made some changes to it, yeah.
What about these issues that Cheryl, I think it's on the table tonight?
Those are just answers to questions, I didn't think there were anything that needed to be changed in it.
Well, right now, the way it is is if someone is retired, they don't have to file taxes until they're retired, which, you know, is not mandatory to file. The way I currently do it is that you wrote they do, right?
Yes, because that's the way the state form was, I mean, I just basically adopted whatever the state, the form.
Right, and this information we got from Ohio Municipal today so that we can...
You could amend that if you wanted to.
...say the same is four issues that, or three issues that's on his paper tonight. I would want, I would be curious to know if we want to read the same, is what our, if did you get a chance to do this?
I just claim instead, once I, I would, I don't know, I think...
I don't hate to have retirees have to file taxes once they...
Yeah, it's only one that we'd have to change, it's only the retirees, the other two are fine. I think the other two are already in there.
Okay.
The threshold, $200, yeah, all they're doing is reaffirming that if you're, if you owe less than $200, you don't have to make estimated payments. And then the college, the credit for college students, there's no reference to that, but we kept that in there because we already had that in our prior ordinance, so. I mean, I guess my inclination would be to go ahead and pass it and if, since we've had our three readings and to get our 30 days in, and then if we want to amend it to, for the retiree exception or whatever, that we can go ahead and do that.
Down to Troy's recommendation, I'll move that we, ordinance 2015-13.
Okay. Ron Jones makes a motion for ordinance 2015-13 regarding the income tax ordinance, second please.
Second.
Mike Barr seconds, roll call please.
Beverly.
I guess, yes.
Hader.
As long as we're willing to revisit those concerns you have, yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance passes with the, I guess, the exception that we can revisit it and change what Diane had brought to our attention.
We could do it, like the first meeting of the new year.
Okay. We'll ask you, you're there responsible.
Ordinance 2015-14, third reading by caption only, an ordinance amending section 921.03 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to reduce the minimum sewer charge.
I'll make that motion.
Mark Haber makes the motion on ordinance 2015-14.
I'll second that.
Ron Jones seconds. Roll call please.
Jones.
Yes.
Barr.
No.
Hader.
Yes.
Beverly.
No.
And we are tied, and this is to reduce, and I will vote yes. So, it is reduced.
Next is ordinance 2015-15, third reading by caption only, an ordinance amending section 925.02 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to revise water rates.
I still move.
Ron Jones makes a motion on 2015-15.
I'll second.
Mark Haber seconds, roll call please.
Hader.
Yes.
Barr.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Okay.
Next is ordinance 2015-16, a second reading by caption only, annual appropriations ordinance of the Hicksville village. And the last thing that, thanks. Resolution 2015-24 is a first reading by caption only, resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing a mayor to purchase real estate necessary for sewer and drainage improvements and declaring an emergency, but since we only have four people here, we can only do a first reading of that tonight.
First reading?
Kent. We've only got four people.
All right.
Five to suspend the rules. And then I also had the same thing applies to this, ordinance 2015-17, an ordinance restructuring the pay for full-time employees of the EMS department and declaring an emergency, but the same thing will apply to that. That has to do, I know it's around the table there or whatever, but basically converting their salary to an hourly rate, and one of the questions that'll have to be answered on that, we can, presumably we've got enough people at the next meeting, we can pass that as an emergency, is what effective date that we want to make that? And I only say that for Diane's purposes and for payroll. If we're switching from a salary to an hourly, we would want it to correspond with a pay period, as opposed to being in the middle of a pay period.
Okay.
So, I'm sure we can figure out whatever, after the next date, whenever the...
Are we with, yes, are we within the timeframe to get this done before the end of the year?
Yes, yes.
Okay. One thing we need to quick visit, if I have some pushback on parking. People are talking, meaning business people uptown, white blood of our community with the industry. For our downtown district, we've had several businesses and more every day approach to basically change what was passed by council a month and a half ago. So, I know I've talked to council people, I've talked to a lot of people in the community. I would like to defer to Ron, Mark, Mike, Ron, what are your feelings on reverting this back? Well, changing the progression that we have now of 30-degree back to 45.
Does everybody know what the cost involves?
Um, I was briefed on a cost of around $9,000, $10,000.
Around $9,800 plus.
Okay.
And can they do it yet this far?
Yeah, but something else I need to think about is it's going to goof up the new $4,000 handicap ramps, I guess, probably. It's also going to mess up all my curb paintings there, going to have a high...
This is my take on it, and I'll shut up, I don't have a vote. We lost 27 spots. We went from 88 to 53. Had we known that we were going to lose 27 spots, we probably wouldn't have, the vote probably wouldn't have been the way it was. We were told 6 to 8. So, do you spend the money for business in Hicksville, basically, to create those spots That's all I'll speak to, so. I would like to see us make a decision, one way or the other.
I've called a couple of business owners, you know, I'm downtown. I've heard, and I've heard some positives about it, and I'm not saying, you know, people helped and get my back, I'm not, we're difficult to help with that issue, but I've definitely heard more probably complaints kinds of about it than I have positives.
Same way here, I've had probably 80% against it, 20% that I've talked to before, so. I didn't realize we'd lose that many.
But if we're not going to gain that much because of the handicap, need a little more study on it? How soon would you find out that information?
I don't know. I'm just saying, if they don't line up, then you just wasted another $4,000.
Often I don't gain that much unless you go like it is, but...
Well, you'd probably regain some, I mean, there's no doubt that if things don't line up, then you guys do what you want, just don't change your mind six months from now again. I guess that's all I'm asking.
Well, I don't have a problem finding a place to park uptown, since it was done. And I've heard, the only con that I've heard about it was I heard a couple beauticians talking about getting a petition around, and I had, one thing I have noticed, you know, the store owners don't have to park in front of their store, they can go out back or down the street. I would not want any, I would not park in front of my business, or would I want any employees parked in front of my business?
Well, the old adage is, and it comes from my father, and I think everybody understands that, you don't take away a customer's spot, and that's what you're relating to. And we have people in town that do that, and we've approached them, some yes, some no. But right now, the issue is, do we vote to change? I, like I said, I don't have a vote, but we need to do something.
Well, you know where I stand, I voted against changing it at all, I didn't think we should lose one spot if we didn't have to, just for the sake of the businesses, but I think we need to study a better way to get spots back because that's the life...
Would you be in favor of going back to 45, then, because you voted to keep it anyway?
Yeah, I didn't want to lose any spots, and certainly losing 40% is not an acceptable solution, in my opinion.
I'd like to see like a plot, how much we're going to gain, just not guessing, I don't know who could do that.
Well, we're going to gain back, basically.
But like he said, though, the handicap, is that...
It seemed to me, and I'm going to throw this out there, it seemed like the corners got a lot bigger with the striping when the state came in, you know?
Yeah.
That's because we went by O dot spec. The other that were up there, we're not O dot spec. You have to be so many feet away from a walkway, you have to be so many feet away from...
Well, how did we get away with it so long, you know, when we were at the...
Well, we always did it ourselves. Or if Gerken would pave the downtown, Gerken would do it. But you got the state involved on this, and everybody knows you don't do that.
Well...
I would hate to see a change... I would hate to see it changed, I would hate to see the money spent to change it. I think we're worried about the money that's lost to the businesses if we don't change it, which is a lot more than repainting stripes.
I don't think it'd take any browners to paint them.
You can't, you gotta, you have to diamond grind them off.
I talked to John, he's got a lot of traffic flow in their business, and that's about different kinds of people, different situations.
Who could do that, study it, plot it out?
I've been talking to Gurkin, they're the ones that came up with the estimate. I'll find out how they came up with them.
Let me ask you this, Kent, if we did it ourselves before, why can't we go...
Cannot paint the thermal decals.
No, I'm not talking about that. Once they're gone, the thermal decals, why can't we strike that ourselves, which we would do?
Why not just have the crew come in and do it while they're doing all the rest? I mean, they're going to have it laid out, they can boom, boom, boom. They're going to have to do it during daytime hours, so downtown's going to be goofed up. People better not complain about that.
I don't think they'll complain.
It looks professional done, the way it's done.
Well, that's what I'd like to see again. I'll find out what they can send me, but if they could still get it done this fall, that you wait till next meeting, then you're into lunar moons.
How many you think we'll gain? Ten, fifteen, what'd you say, offhand?
I really don't know. I think we need to find out, quickly.
To gain ten, I'd be for it. Twenty, I would definitely be for it. You know, messed up.
Well, we'll try to find out. You guys might have to call a special council meeting because you passed it. I voted council to change it, so it's going to take a little council to change it back. So I'll see what I can find out.
It would be under your threshold, you can make that decision, right?
Oh, no, no. That's why I had you guys vote the first time, and I don't know if people thought it through.
I didn't think we'd lose...
Because the whole thing with safety, did somebody throwing safety out for parking? So to me, the whole thing doesn't make...
Safety out, we're looking at business downtown.
Would the state be involved this time, too?
Well, the question would be is if somebody at Gurkin, obviously they got a, somebody knows what the distance, the length on each side of the road is, and how far apart, I mean, I would think, some simple math, they ought to be able to get within a couple of spaces of how many...
I'll opt that we have a special meeting.
They've got to know where the hydrants are, they've got to know where the curb stops are.
Hang on. I'll opt that we have a special meeting as soon as you get the information, so we can bring council back in, and then we will vote. Okay?
Well, it's fine, and I'm not against changing it back, because here it is, we're at this point.
We've spent money...
Well, if we realize it's a mistake, it would be erroneous not to correct it as quick as possible and admit the mistake rather than carry it on just because we were too proud to change something.
Okay.
I'll just say if you're going to call a special meeting, you might as well...
And you can get a pay thing, too. Okay. So as soon as you tell me, I'll call a special meeting, hopefully this week. All right, going on, police and fire?
I have nothing.
Fire, you want to sub for PMS?
Yeah, I have nothing for fire. PMS, we'd like to use state through the word of EMT, he's still certified.
All right, I would make that recommendation to council. We'll need a note.
I'll make that motion.
Mike Barret makes the motion to go with my recommendation. Ron Jones, second. Roll call, please.
Haber.
Yes.
Barret.
Yep.
Jones.
Yes.
Okay, going on, clerk treasurer record?
I'm going to note in the minutes, I've also been a good physical grudge for your background type.
I missed that, because it's right there. Thank you.
Well, let's... I thought Solomon was going to bring up personal committee or somebody, or Troy was going to say what he needed, how we were going to handle this clerk treasurer position, how you were going to fill my position, because we're waiting for some advice from someone.
I spoke to Mick about it on Friday, I don't know who, but he called me at my office on Friday, and I also talked to Mike about it today, and what I said off the top of my head to Mike was, because Diane's current elected position isn't up until the end of March, correct?
Correct.
March 31st.
Correct.
That what's going to have to happen is, we can't just go ahead, the fiscal officer position isn't effective until April 1st, so we can't just go ahead and appoint somebody fiscal officer. We got to follow the rules for replacement of our clerk treasurer as if she was retiring or if she died or whatever, and we had to replace, no different than we had to replace Larry.
But you're going to get clarification on that.
Right, and I, and I am ninety-eight percent sure that it's by council approval, but I want, I got a couple more things I got to check. But if that's the case, then whoever the, whether it's the person that's ultimately going to have the job, or if somebody in Diane's office you want to appoint till March 31st to complete her term, that's how it'll have to be done, and then the new person, which may be the person that's filling it, the new person will, the job will take effect on April 1st.
Okay.
And then the only other issue is if somebody from Diane's office gets bumped into that position, whether it's temporary or permanent, that's going to leave an opening in, you know, assistant position or whatever, that that'll need to be advertised for until...
So if I understand you correctly, council will appoint someone to fill my entire term?
Right.
Right.
And if that's somebody else that's in your office, which it likely is to be, I guess, then wherever their position is could be filled.
We can go and advertise for that one, then? All right, thank you. That's really, it's not like I have anything else.
Going on with the mayor's report, we have filled through volunteerism, the people for the tax review board, Barb Savies, Joyce Shadrack would be the two from the council that they have to fill. I had talked to Cheryl Meller today, and she would, I have to fill one, and she would accept that appointment. So we do have the three filled. The open house at Hickory...
Do they need to be residents of the village? Serve on tax review?
I don't know.
That may be...
I thought you were asking about my job.
I didn't read anything in that ordinance that said that, but she's in the township.
Well, no, I just, before you vote on it, you better check it out.
I thought it was in here somewhere.
Well, isn't something that has to be done right today?
Well, and the tax law didn't take effect till January 1st, and that's what it's from.
That would seem to create all kinds of issues if you had people from different jurisdictions sitting on tax boards.
Yeah, I'm trying to look there, I think it's in here somewhere.
Well, Joyce Shadrack lives within the village, doesn't she?
Both of them.
And Barb Savies lives just outside the city limits. That's the case. Well, while you're researching that, you have the mayor's court report in your packet. You also have an open house at Hickory Creek on November 24th from 1 to 4. There was a note to please announce, please do not drop off recyclables, and leave before the county trailer comes. The other thing, you know, congratulations go out to Diane, she will be the village's new mayor come January 1, and Sheila, you'll be coming on board also, so welcome. And I mentioned Kent, did a good job with the industrial drive, and then we have a card if anyone would like to sign it for Bruce Hart. Explain it?
Doesn't say, no.
I thought I read...
It has other requirements, but it doesn't say anything about that.
I, my mind is not as good as what it used to be. I didn't see it.
Also, Haley Hesselworth's been crowned the North Carolina Idol Haggard winner.
Okay, well, congratulations to her. Should I be a second time? She did this before.
A different town, though.
Let's overlook this. Okay. All right, and then Kent, we'll wait for you to let me know when we have a special meeting.
I have a question for you, Kent.
Need a motion to adjourn here, please. Ron's got questions.
How did the water testing and the CDL testing go?
We won't know on the water and sewer tests, those usually take five, six weeks, depending. Either one passed the CDL, they took too long to do their pre-trip, Austin goes back this Thursday, Steve goes back next Tuesday, so we should know by then.
And on Hicks TV Minutes, it says the board begin to discuss the possibility of giving up the park building. They're not using it, why don't we close it?
They discussed that again this week, that's October, I wasn't at that. They had been talking about getting their family, they, I don't see why that would...
I understand it's a really nice setup down there, but if they're not using it, why pay heat and lights and everything else down there?
Yeah, they would think the same thing. We discussed it this Saturday.
Well, then we'll leave that up to committee to bring that back up.
There's no return on it for the last few years, it's just been minimal power within it.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You got it.
Mark Haber makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Ron Jones, second, roll call, please.
Barret.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Haber.
Yes.
Okay. Take care, everybody, thank you for coming.